All right. Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started. A couple of people might be joining us online. I'm not sure. Dwayne indicated he might be a little late. We are going to get started with a discussion on private street density with the Home Builders Association. It looks like Brad is coming up to get started on that.
Good morning. Yeah, I'll come up and get us kicked off. This is your -- one of your quarterly meetings with the Home Builders Association and the City Council. It came a little bit sooner than your other one because I think Counselor Fager had asked that this one kind of be bumped up. We do have today a couple of reps from Home Builders Association here. We also have Joe Hyatt. You see, I got him up here on the screen, our fire marshal, who has some slides here at the end. I'll just kind of review those, but he's here if you have any questions in going down that route. But I'll start by just kind of giving an overview here. The subject, consider the HBA's request related to middle housing and increased residential density. If you read through the slides, you would see that staff, this is kind of the, where they say you're supposed to give your concluding remarks first and then go and tell you what you're supposed to have said or something like that three times. But basically, you know, staff ended up on this topic and really, at least coming into today, recommending that we continue with their ordinance as it is in terms of our private street with standards. But I did want to make clear, I mean, we're not in any way, shape, or form suggesting that private streets don't have a role to play in Grants Pass's street grid, you know, street system. I mean, they certainly do, and you'll see that we have allowed private streets for a long time. I think the real focus is, I understand it today, was really to what's the relationship of our private streets to middle housing? And since, you know, middle housing is such a hot topic right now, how are we, how are we as a city going to handle that as we see more and more middle housing projects coming through? So it's good. It's good that we're having the conversation. Here's just kind of the order of presentation. We'll review their request and then talk about the current private street standards, give you a few specific examples of built private streets, talk about density calculations. And then just a quick overview of what exactly are the, a couple of the middle housing rules that are applicable to this topic, some fire safety considerations, and then staff and DLCD interpretation. So here's the paragraph that is in the Josephine County Home Builders Association request from last November. It was item number five, need to address issues with middle housing and private streets. Currently, private streets only allow up to a certain number of dwelling units based on the street section or width. With duplexes and ADUs counting as a single unit, can we also use this to exceed the current private street limitations? And I think by limitations, they're focused on the width, but Justin and Gail are here and can add more to that if they've had more conversations. We really, leading into today, haven't had many other conversations, you know, there've been a lot of other topics. So that's the request. So what is the current development code require? Most of the rules are in section, in Article 27. And 27 clarifies the general intent of when these can be used. You'll see here the last sentence, where necessary to give access to adjacent properties, these streets shall be extended as publicly dedicated streets. So that's the assumption in our code, that if you're going to do new development, it's the assumption right off the bat is that it's going to be a public street. But then it goes on to number three, saying where residential parcels may be developed without the need to extend streets, the developing parcel may be served by either public or private. So the intent here is that private streets are really only just used in Grants Pass in dead-end situations. If we expect that there's going to be future development, they're going to stub, you know, those need to be public. But we're really focused on the dead-end streets. Section 105, so this clarifies the number of units that can take access off of a private street. Private streets can serve up to 10 units, and that's the term that's used, dwelling units. And then it goes on to say, private streets, more than 10, you can use in three situations: planned unit developments, manufactured housing parks, I'm sorry, four recreational vehicle parks, and multifamily residential development. So those are the four types of projects where you could actually see a private street that has more than 10. I don't think we're really talking about any of those per se, because usually if you're coming in with a planning development, you're coming in with an apartment complex, you know, you're going to be addressing the vehicle circulation as a part of that project. I think we're probably more talking about those situations where you've got, you know, just a dead-end street and it's residential without being a PUD or without being a manufactured housing park, et cetera. And then we go on to section 12 in 27 that outlines everything that, in terms of design of private streets, and getting to the crux of today's topic, the number of units. So again, it starts out, private streets serving less than 10 will be constructed to the same construction standard. So that's referring to how is the base constructed? So you couldn't come in and do, for example, just one inch of gravel and, you know, one inch of asphalt. That would not be permitted. You have to still construct the base regardless of how wide it is to the city's standards in terms of how it's constructed. But then the next sentence goes on to say, private streets serving 10 or more will be constructed to the same design and construction standards. So that's getting to, you know, you're talking about the same width as a private, for a public street as a private street. And then in terms of the unit numbers, A and B set up two different options for private street. A, if you have four dwelling units or less, you can use a 20-foot street, no curbs, no sidewalk, no planter strips. It looks in functions just kind of like a driveway. And then B, a private street serving five to 10, have a 22-foot wide private street. They do require a curb on those and a four-foot sidewalk on one side, but don't have a planter strip. So those are today, what we have is the two main design types. So, you know, one to four units or two to four units, and then five to 10. Here's just a table showing the comparison. These top two rows are public streets, and the bottom two would be those two private street standards that I just talked about. So minimum paving width in a public standard cul-de-sac, we require 26 feet of asphalt. So that's basically from the curb to curb, the driving surface, 26 feet. Again, there's no planter strips on any of these, so those aren't really a part of the conversation. The curbing is required except for, like I said, those two to four units, there is no curb there. And then the sidewalks are required in our public cul-de-sacs as well as the private streets that have five to 10 units. And then we have the maximum length standards there. On the bottom there, you can see kind of how that looks on the street. There's a cross-section. This is taken from our transportation system plan. I think the main thing I wanted to call out there, you can see that there are in our private street standard, again, for through streets. This isn't necessarily for a cul-de-sac, but we have parking on both sides. And that's important to think about when you're talking about density. If there is no on-street parking, then all of the parking has to be on the lot. In our typical through street for a public street, you know, we have the design so that you do have to put parking on-street on both sides of the street. That's not the case in, for a cul-de-sac, so it's a little less relevant. But I just wanted to put that in there because when we're talking about adding more units, you often do have the situation where you have people parking both on their lot as well as on the street. Here's four examples of private streets that are in Grants Pass today, already built out. This first one is Jody Lane. It's in Holgate subdivision. It's four lots. You can see here that what I mentioned, that kind of just looks like a big wide driveway. This one's 20 feet wide, and it, here's the plat. It comes along the south part of that subdivision and then serves those four lots. This one is Evy Lane in Kellenbeck subdivision. Part of the reason for including these two is to show you that while we do have minimum standards, it doesn't necessarily mean that all private streets, you know, get built to that. Developers have the option to build their private street wider. We just, we set the minimum. So this is an example where, you know, they actually had a 30-foot wide private street instead of the last one. There's three lots here in this case. This is just off of Highway 199, out near, what is this, off of, I can't remember what street. It's just, it's on the north side of 199. So there's, it was platted here. You come off of Kellenbeck, and then there's these three lots that take access. In this case, you do have a lot 11 back here, where you can see on the picture below that it's a fairly big open space. There's some wetlands, so it's going to limit development. But it, the point here is that it is a fairly large lot that's vacant, that could come in and do some development in the future in this white area. The wetlands are shown here in the dots. So, you know, that might be something that we would see, okay, well, we want to come in with, you know, exceeding the, like, middle housing product. Instead of just putting one house, which that would be four units, you might see, you know, a duplex or a triplex, and so that would add. Now, in this case, since you have a 30-foot wide street, it's probably not going to be as much of an issue, but it's an example. Here's one, Formosa Gardens. This one, actually, again, it's private street, but it exceeds by far what the minimum width is. This one actually has a 44-foot wide access private street comes in. It does serve 10 lots, and this was also part of a planned unit development. And then this last example is GI subdivision, also off of Harbeck, Cadet Court. You can see on the plat here, it comes in, and again, it's a cul-de-sac. It comes in off of Yorktown and then serves seven lots. These seven lots are built out. They have all, you know, houses, that's a 25-foot wide drive, you can see in the photo at the bottom here. They also have a sidewalk in that case. So getting to the question today about density and on existing private streets, how do we handle density moving forward? Dwelling unit is, I wanted to put the definition before the council here, is one or more habitable rooms which are occupied or which are intended or designed to be occupied by one family with housekeeping facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, and eating. So that's how we define a dwelling unit. So if you don't have an area for cooking, for example, you know, it's not a dwelling unit. But if it has those four elements, living, sleeping, cooking, and eating, regardless of how it's laid out, regardless of what you call it, then that is considered a dwelling unit in our code. And that's what the private street standard is built on. Now, we do have in the draft middle housing code application, that's the, last week, the Planning Commission had their first hearing on that. And it does change how residential density is calculated. It says that duplexes count as a single unit. And again, these are coming from the state. This is not, these are not Grants Pass-driven. And then townhouses, cottages, triplexes, and quads are exempt from max net density. So basically, moving forward, if you're coming in with any of those, we don't even look at what the underlying density is. So you know how we're used to seeing, you know, maximum of seven units per acre or whatever. That's no longer the case with middle housing. You just come in, and we don't even look at density. We just look at the lot sizes. So that is how the ordinance will be coming to you, the middle housing, once the Planning Commission is done with it. And so I think it's obviously important because, yes, the code, we are mandated by the state to look at middle housing as, it has to be allowed. We're also mandated to not consider what the density is. But they do in the statute, and I'll show that in a minute, talk a little bit about, well, how do you look at that from a public safety standpoint? I'm not sure we need to talk about this one much, density calculations. I just wanted to show you that there is a difference in terms of the expected trip count that comes out of middle housing. And again, when we're talking about the number of trips using a private street and how much traffic you're going to generate on that, this is really what the Institute for Transportation Engineers out of Texas, this is what they use and what we use. Single dwellings detached, 9.4 trips per unit, per day is the average. But for all the other types of middle housing, they do drop that, and we're, so we're using 7.2 average daily trips. So it does lower a little bit the expected amount of traffic that is generated if you have a middle housing.
Brad, I have a question about that. I assume that means per, like, per unit in the four-plex. So the four-plex itself would be 7.2 times four?
Yes. Yes, thank you for that clarification. And those traffic engineers, they can kind of geek out on this stuff, but it, a trip is, you know, just basically leaving your house, that's one trip, going to the grocery store, and then from the grocery store back, that's actually another trip. So then you go to your school, that's one trip, and then you go back to your house, that's another trip. So it's not, you know, one trip isn't what maybe we think of as just going back and forth. It's each segment of that. So that's where they get up. And they've got about, I don't know, 120 studies that they've done across the country to try to come up with these, and they update this every three years. HB 2001, so this is the middle housing code, came into effect in 2019. It says that, you know this, all large cities have to allow middle housing, including those created through additions or conversions of detached single dwellings. So we did, you know, this does include not just new construction, but if you're converting a large house and you're dividing that now into a triplex or something, that also falls under the middle housing rules. OAR 660, subsection 20 defines sufficient infrastructure as including access via public or private streets, meeting the adopted emergency vehicle access standards to a city's public street system. So, excuse me, the legislation does, did anticipate private streets at least being looked at and is part of what sufficient infrastructure is defined as. And that's important because the later state that a large city shall work with an applicant for development to determine whether sufficient infrastructure will be provided or can be provided upon submittal of a middle housing application. So to be clear, it's not like the statute specifically says a city has to use this width in order to be sufficient infrastructure. It doesn't do that. It leaves a lot of latitude up to local governments to work with developers on a case-by-case basis and to kind of figure this out. And that's what we've been, we've been trying to do and working a lot with Justin and other developers to look at each one on a case-by-case and saying, okay, well, what is the expected impact and what is the infrastructure that we have in place? And what's going to meet the minimum public safety standards? A few fire safety considerations that your fire marshal had, parking and maneuverability are obviously primary concerns for them when they're looking at a project. Private street parking violations are not enforceable by police. So that kind of gets to, once they get built, and let's say, you know, there's an issue and somebody calls up and says, hey, you know, I can't, the ambulance can't get to my house. These are, since they're private streets, they are regulated really by either a homeowners' association or in some cases, and this is where the third bullet comes in, and Joe can talk more to this, they are kind of looking at, well, what, you know, what is a fire lane? And using that terminology and kind of thinking about it through that lens and say, okay, well, if it's a fire lane, then that might be an avenue to require somebody to keep their trailers or their boats or their cars off of that narrow private street so that if there is an emergency, there is access. And then also under the fire code, the city can provide a citation, not have a vehicle removed. So again, this gets to the enforcement piece and some of the concerns that we have on that side. And here were just a couple of photos that Joe provided, kind of showing some of these narrower streets and some of the situations that can occur. So as far as staff and DLCD interpretations on this, we had a conversation with Ethan Stuckmeyer. Ethan is the DLCD Housing Division Manager. He was very involved with the middle housing, HB 2001 code and the legislation, and has been looking at this for a long time and is the main point person for helping cities kind of work through some interpretation issues. He did tell us that as long as a local regulation does not apply the type of dwelling unit, so in this case, a private street, you know, we, in his view, we cannot say on private streets, you can have single-family detached, but you can't have duplexes or you can't have quadplexes. As long as you're not differentiating on the type and you're only regulating based on the units, and that would be the same across the board, then he thinks that that does allow cities to cap the units based on public safety reasons. And then the last bullet there, unless current private street with standards are increased, staff believes the current cap of four, four-unit cap for a 20-foot wide and the 22-foot width for a 10, for 10 units applies regardless of whether the dwelling units are in a single family detached or ADUs, et cetera. And that is how we've been interpreting up to this point. So we have, we have a few situations where there's a private street today and somebody, they have 20-foot wide and they have four units already, and somebody wants to come in and do an ADU. We have at staff been interpreting that as a new dwelling unit, and so we have said you cannot proceed with your ADU unless you get a wider street or you get some other access point. So the call to action, council discretion, there's a few alternatives there. You could require middle housing to comply with current private street maximum dwelling unit standards. We could amend the development code to allow for a percentage increase over the existing You could authorize staff to negotiate the number of units on a site-by-site basis. At this point, like I said, we've really just been pretty black and white about it. When somebody comes in, if you're already at the max and your street is not wide enough, then we have been saying no, but you, you know, we would have to bring, you know, we would have to come up with some criteria of what exactly that would be if you wanted to go with that third bullet. But, you know, I think it's an option to talk about, certainly. And then others, as we hear from the Home Builders Association today, we can, there might be some other ideas that come up.
Questions? I see Rob. Go ahead.
So Brad, on the chart for two to four units, minimum paving width, 20 feet, five to 10 units, 22 feet. And, right, and you were just saying that there could be a situation where there's four units and somebody wants to do an ADU, and the staff currently is interpreting that as, now that's a fifth unit, so it falls beneath, the road size falls beneath what the staff feels is required. So what actual benefit does the actual two feet provide? In other words, why would, why are these four now to be five units? Why would they be in danger in some way? Or what problems are being created that would then be solved if that road was two feet wider?
Yeah.
Was that arbitrary?
Joe may be, you know, better able to answer that in terms of practically on the ground, in terms of, you know, getting a fire truck in there. But I think that one of the things to consider, you know, is that, is that sidewalk? Because if you do the 22-foot, you also have to have, you know, a sidewalk on one side. So while obviously they try not to, these are usually rolled curbs, so if you really, you can almost think about it in an emergency situation, you actually have 26 feet to work with, even though the 22 is the blacktop. But you do have that rolled curb, and you know, those trucks can, could go up there if they needed to. But it does also, I think, in some situations for maneuvering ladders and other hoses and things like that, a couple of feet can make a difference. But I don't know. Joe, do you want to, do you want to address anything else on that?
So just basically, as, you know, our density increases, we are going to have more access problems. That's why the, a little bit of the increase, but like Brad said, we've worked very closely looking at sidewalks and being able to utilize those with the roll curbs gives us some maneuverability. The issue we do have is, I mean, we don't normally want to pull up on a sidewalk, they're not engineered to support our trucks, but we can in an emergency. It's more like allowing vehicles to pass or things to get past us so we can get into the emergency scene.
Any other questions? Rick?
Thank you, Brad. Is there maximum length on the cul-de-sac when specifically addressing the fire issues? I think, I want to say something in my mind, was 150 feet from a hydrant. Is there something like that?
Yeah. Do you want to address that, Joe? That is, 150 feet is what they use, but...
So the maximum length in the fire code without a turnaround is 150 feet. If they go beyond that, they have to provide us with something. Working through the private streets, we weren't requiring a full cul-de-sac. We came up with alternatives to that, which is a hammerhead, offset hammerhead, things that would require less real estate but basically give us the same ability to maneuver the vehicle.
But do you have a maximum length of where the fire hydrant is?
So normally, our average hydrant spacing is 400 feet between hydrants. And how we basically do that, industrial has a little bit different formula. It has to deal with the size of the building and the demand of the flow. For residential, it's this 400 feet average spacing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question about how this relates to parking standards that I guess, as things have changed over the past couple of years, we're no longer requiring parking at the residence? Or how many units are required?
Yes. So unless the lawsuit, you know, changes that, we are, we are now not requiring, doesn't mean that they're not going to be built, but we are not requiring under the code off-street parking. So now we still have, you know, we're still seeing, especially in residential situations, driveways. So that typically, you know, you have a 20-foot minimum setback for your face of your garage. So that's usually adequate to get a, you know, a vehicle between the face of your garage and the curb when you have that driveway. So that kind of, you know, that essentially gives you two off-street parking spaces if you have a double car garage. But when you start talking about plexes, which usually don't have an associated garage per unit, a lot of times they will come in with the carports or some other off-street parking. But, you know, that's where we're seeing at least, especially in other cities that have been doing this a little bit longer than we have, a little bit more challenges with the plex development where you see, okay, maybe only have two of the four units can get off-street, and then the others have to be on-street. And that's where you start to potentially get into the congestion. Did that answer your question, Mayor?
It does. And these minimum standards don't account for off-street park, or on-street parking. They're just basically two lanes of traffic.
When we're talking about private streets, correct. Yep.
Although somewhat unenforceable.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Did somebody from the Home Builders Association want to talk?
Afternoon, counsel. Justin Gerlitz, part of the Home Builders Association. And yeah, I just want to thank you again for continuing to discuss these topics that have to do a lot with housing and middle housing especially. I really do appreciate what staff and Brad have done to kind of run down the list and talk with DLCD. I know when this question was first posed, it was actually in November of '22, and that was when this was just starting. And what we've been seeing, it sounds like maybe staff has too, is people are coming in and they want to use middle housing. It seems to be the majority of the housing that we're doing right now, which is, I think is good, but it comes with these little challenges and questions on the existing codes. Right now specifically, I've had several people either come to me that have private streets that are undeveloped, that are ready to build on, or they want to buy a private street lot and they want to do duplexes or an ADU in a house, which essentially per the new middle housing code is a duplex, which is kind of weird. ADUs basically was the previous terminology to middle housing, and now a duplex could be two separate units on a lot. As Brad mentioned, the state middle housing code specifically calls out duplexes to be treated like a single-family unit from a density perspective. And I think that's where this question first came up, is, you know, here's the state saying, hey, you can put a duplex every single place you can put a single-family home. Across the door. That's microphone. So that brought up the question of private streets and access, which as Brad mentioned, are based on dwelling units. So it's kind of, it seemed like it was kind of a competing code. And then to throw in the question, Mayor, that you just asked about the parking, you know, here we go. And then the state comes down since we made this request and says, oh, by the way, you don't have to have any parking. So we got all these different codes in addition to the fire marshal who says, my important, my thing I'm looking at is most important here is emergency access. So kind of throw all those in the mix, and that's why we brought this up quite a while ago. I do have a lot of people that want to do duplexes, a lot of builders on these lots because they fit. And one of the other things that they do is you could take a single-family lot on a private street with one water service and one sewer service and still do a duplex without upgrading those utilities. So I think that's one of the primary reasons here that this topic's here today. I don't believe that this really applies to higher density developments, this issue, this question. You know, triplexes and quadplexes and cottage clusters really don't fit on a 5,000 or 4,000 square foot lot. So really, really the question here, I think, is duplexes. And can we come to any kind of compromise to accommodate duplexes on these private streets, whether they're existing or whether they're proposed? As mentioned, the sidewalk, you get that extra two feet, yeah, you get a little bit of benefit from the road. The sidewalk, though, when you start putting curbs and sidewalk on there, now you're seven feet wider, you know, you're two feet wider on the road, four-foot sidewalk plus two six-inch curbs. Essentially, your whole street's seven feet wider than it would be with a 20-foot private street, which is pretty substantial, not so much from a cost, I mean, cost perspective, yes, of course it adds to the cost, but just the overall width. Now you're reducing the ability to build homes on what's left over as land. The other thing that we keep coming across is flag lots. We have a lot of flag lots in the city that haven't been able to be developed until now with middle housing. But a lot of those flag lots, which were originally created in the county, were 25 feet wide. So with the current five to 10-unit private street standard, you can't fit it in a 20-foot wide, 25-foot wide flagpole. So that's the other reason that this topic came up. So, you know, some of the things that we were thinking about, that we've been talking about is, okay, how do we still accommodate public safety, which I think is number one? Parking, which I think is number two? And number three, the ability to build more density like the middle housing code intends to on these single-family lots with duplexes. So, you know, one of the things I was thinking about is, A, could you do duplexes if you had a parking standard for it? I don't know how that plays into what Brad just said about the state, but, you know, I agree, if you have a duplex with one parking space, you're probably going to run into some issues of people trying to park on the street. But if you had a duplex, which oftentimes has a garage and a parking space in front, now each unit would have two parking spaces. Now you have four parking spaces per duplex. If we could make that a requirement for duplexes to go on these streets, would that be enough to offset the parking concerns and access concerns because people wouldn't be parking? One thing I have noticed over the years, and I noticed on these photos that were just up here, is when you put the sidewalk on there, on these 22-footers, that's when people park on private streets because they roll up on the sidewalk and they park there. And that's what all the examples had. The sidewalk, to me, doesn't serve as much of an importance. Sure, pedestrian safety, they could walk outside of the road, but these are very low-volume driveways essentially. So unless you're getting into a really large private street, I don't think the driveway or the sidewalk's as important.
And then second?
Second to that, could we, maybe, I'm just throwing ideas here, allow more density on these 22-footers, same standard, but without the sidewalk? So we could fit them into some of these more awkwardly shaped flag lots that are tucked into town everywhere. I do, I know, I know Joe has really tried to, over the last few years, try to sign these as fire lanes, which I think the idea was to give authority to public safety to site and tow vehicles. I don't see any issue with that. I don't think the home builders do because it's essentially, nobody wants people to park on these private streets. So if that's a solution, moving forward to kind of help spur a little bit more density but force people to not park on the streets, I think signing them as fire lanes is really probably not too much of an issue. So, but ultimately, yeah, the goal here is, is there any way to accommodate duplexes on existing and new private streets without going to the larger street standard in exchange for additional onsite parking? I think is probably the simplest way to put it.
Questions for Justin? They're all thinking.
Thank you.
No questions at this time? All right. Questions or thoughts, counsel? DJ, go ahead.
Sure. So I'd certainly like to see for higher density applications on public roads, what the ask sounds like to me is to allow for duplexes or ADUs. But if I understand this correctly, it's not possible to distinguish the type, but only the number, correct? So we couldn't just say you can have duplexes but not tri or quadplexes? Is that correct?
I think so.
Sure, sure.
Again, this is kind of an open end. You know, when we're talking about multifamily, is that, was that, is that what I heard you write, counselor? That's a completely different topic because the state's interpretation is only applicable to middle housing products. So anytime we have five units in a structure or more, then that whole conversation is out the door in terms of what the state thinks. We can set that ourselves.
Sure. But as far as distinguishing the type on private roads?
As far as in our code, yeah, distinguishing the type, if you're talking about between duplex, cottages, you know, townhouses, yes. We wouldn't. According to Stuckheimer, we couldn't do that.
So it would seem the only other reasonable vehicle to achieve higher densities is just raise the cap for, from five to six or seven, and from 10 to 12 or 13, or some kind of bonus density. For every two, you get a bonus up to a certain cap, something like that. So we're not distinguishing the type, but we're allowing for larger numbers. Of course, asking the big question here is that, is that a reasonable increase given the emergency services access question? And that, that can be an explicit question if we're going to be having, if we're going to be having this discussion.
Thank you, counselor. Yeah, you basically hit right on the topic.
Yeah, so Brad, parking is our concern. If we're not including enough parking spaces at the homes, they have to place, but it's still out onto the street. You know, we're into compliance, not enforcement. So in those instances where we run into these issues, we've worked with folks, you know, we do these beautiful hammerheads where people think it's very hard to park them. We've always been able to work it out so far. But when it comes to the point we can't work it out is where we have the issue, especially as we run into multiple vehicles that are going to be parking because they have no other choice. Again, we really don't have an avenue other than taking them and citing them and taking them to court. And again, that's a, that's a non-proven tactic that I've used. That's kind of something that I try to come up with to accommodate more development. So that's really our concern. To an average structure fire, we're going to bring four full-size fire engines in there and a tow and chase rig, ambulances, so there's just a lot of room that takes up. And currently with our staffing, the way we run, we have to bring those full-size fire engines. We don't really have the ability to not. And that's going to take up some real estate. We do use equipment off of those, but mostly we're getting the firefighter to the scene with the stuff they need to fight the fire with. If we can, you know, accommodate something like some more off-street parking where we're not running into those issues, I think there's definitely things we can do. More into working with people and setting boundaries and then just like not allowing anything, but it's going to have to be able to give and take and kind of do that in common shape.
Sure. All right. So on the hammerhead, what is the depth of the hammerhead? 20 feet that you need as a minimum?
Yeah, on each side, yes.
The depth?
Yeah.
Not the width?
Not the width. The width would still be the same width as the, at the front.
Okay, but 20 feet in depth would be fine.
Yeah.
So then, like you said, people have used that, they parked their RVs in there? So if at the end of the hammerhead, they provided the RV parking, that would not be a problem?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
DJ and then Rob.
Okay.
So yeah, I guess getting back to the question that the mayor asked about state parking standards. I mean, I'd like to know where that boundary is for the allowance of, requirement of parking, if you will. Is it possible to standardize off-street parking in private street circumstances without being too contradictory to the code? Or is it possible to structure something whereas percent increase density beyond a certain standard is going to need parking, off-site, off-street parking for emergency services? Something like that? Because if I understand it correctly, emergency services is really the hurdle here. I'd just like to know, where's that boundary? Where's the authority? Is that, is that, is that possible to standardize in our private road circumstances?
Legally, I think, yeah, we could, we could build that in and create a, either an amended private street standard or, you know, a kind of, maybe a third category that just focuses on duplexes and then, yeah, sets up a width or some other, you know, design feature, signage, you know, some of these things that we don't currently have in our code that are specific that address some of the fire marshal's concerns.
I think that'd be great because the ultimate goal here was can we safely increase density on private roads? Thanks.
Rob and then Rick.
Yeah, my concern is the same, very similar, but from a little different angle. So I'm not clear right now on a, let's say, a private street with four units and 20-foot paving width probably would have no sidewalk. So in a situation like that, is on-street parking currently allowed or not allowed?
Not, it would not be allowed in that situation.
Okay. And so if we bump that up to the 22-foot for a five or 10-unit, is on-street parking allowed there or not allowed?
No, it's still not allowed.
Not allowed? Okay, thank you.
So on the hammerhead, one of the mentions, or item that was mentioned, if we put a fire lane in there to help keep the hammerhead clear, since that's private property, how would that be administered? Would, because it is a fire lane that gives you authority?
Excellent question. We don't know. The fire code has a provision for fire lanes. We established those as a fire lanes. But there's also provisions in the code that says that we do not, that we do not do enforcement on private lots or residential. Residential lots are not included specifically in the Oregon advice statutes. So we're, it's not really a residential lot, but it is private property. And again, until we go into actually having a court case, I can't tell you whether it's going to work or not. Again, we were trying to work toward a means to an end to get there. And like I say, when we talk about, you know, increasing it, it's basically the more density we have without parking, we know it's going to spill out there, and we just want to try and hit it off before it becomes into a problem.
So I wonder if putting that under the CCNRs, that subdivision, if that would be adequate? If there's any way to?
Again, it would be on the private CCNRs to enforce. So the CCNRs, that could enforce towing and removal of the vehicle. But as far as me, as the fire marshal, the fire department, police, we would have no authority to do so. I mean, there's absolutely, the fire lane gives me, and I can find them, I still cannot remove their vehicle.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Valerie?
Okay. Wrap her head around all this, but something that Justin said, he talked about making and upping the parking standards for duplexes, because I can see there being a real problem, like you said, if you have a duplex and they don't have, you just have one parking place. I mean, that's just like, it's ridiculous that that, what could even happen? So is it possible that we, you know, that that, because, and he also said that was the main thing, being wanting people to build was duplexes at this point in time, that, you know, we could up the parking requirement for duplexes? Is that a doable thing?
Under the climate-friendly equitable community rules, no. We can't mandate that unless the court case goes through and that, you know, gets rescinded or somehow lifted. So as it stands right now, they can construct them, but we wouldn't be able to mandate them. I know it sounds crazy, but that's where we're at.
Other questions? DJ?
So then, given the conversation, how can we, as a team, reasonably come up with a mechanism for increasing density on private streets in a safe way? I think that's, that's, that's the question being asked right now.
Yes. Joel?
Is it possible just to give the contractor the option of either widening the street or put in the parking? The parking would not be mandated according to, in accordance with state law, but if they didn't put in the parking, then they would have to widen the access street.
We could certainly, yeah, explore that. You know, the, the rule about no parking is specific to, you know, the on lot, on off-street. So if you required a wider private street, you're no longer really regulating off-street parking. You're just, you're just regulating the width of the access. So I think that, you know, that maybe is something to go down in terms of giving the option. And then, and then once you get into the signage as well, you know, the no signs for the RV and, you know, that probably is the, is the best avenue to start going down, I would think.
Well, the other thing that strikes me is with that option, you don't mandate the parking. And my assertion would be that that would be, would coordinate with state law. But then the other thing is public safety is overriding, and we need to consider that. And we can't, we can't not just go over the cliff because of, and ignore public safety on what we're doing and then end up with an untenable situation.
Justin, could I get you to please repeat because you probably already said it and it just went by? But what specifically is the Home Builders Association asking that would make this situation better for density? Because I'm thinking sidewalks, I mean, obviously we have a difference here in sidewalks versus no sidewalks, but.
Yeah, I think, I think this discussion's great. I think this discussion is exactly what, what the home builders was looking for today. With, again, we've got these competing laws and codes that I'm hearing today, and I'm scratching my head now how to do it too. But could we come up with an alternative to allow duplexes on a private street? You know, so if you had a four, a four-lot private street on a 20-foot private street, could we build a duplex on those lots? In exchange, the exchange that we had thrown out was for requiring two parking spaces per unit, therefore getting the likelihood of cars being parked on the street to. per unit, therefore getting the likelihood of cars being parked on the street to lessen. But I'm also hearing from Brad that the state rules on parking are potentially overriding that. I think the one thing that I'm questioning in my head is, does the fire code override any of this in any way when it comes to parking? Is there any public safety? The fire code is a very distinct code from the building and the development code. Joe and his staff use it for requiring, you know, normally a fire lane is a 20-foot minimum. That's where we get to a 20-foot private street, I believe, is where it originally came from. Is there any way, any mechanism we can use to require, I won't say forcefully, but, you know, mandate two parking spaces per unit for a duplex if it was allowed on a private street over the dwelling unit maximum that's there today? So that's really what we're trying to achieve. And again, this is simply based on multiple builders coming up over the last year and a half going, wow, I'd really like to build a duplex on these private street lots, but we've got this challenge ahead of us. And ultimately, the goal here is to build more housing, so.
So your ask actually has to do with the number of units or how duplexes are being counted and not anything to do with the 20 feet versus 22 feet?
Yeah, well, the existing streets that we run into this on oftentimes are 20 feet wide and they have three or four units on them right now. So if we were to build duplexes on those streets, we would exceed the dwelling unit maximum for that 20-foot street. The other thing I had mentioned, which is kind of second to the big discussion, is we are coming across a lot of historic flag lots that are 25 feet wide and you can't get the higher width street on those lots. They don't fit within the 25-foot flag lot, so. But I think more importantly, if we're really going to focus on something, is is there a way to put duplexes on the smaller classification of streets? Or in the big picture, if we had 10 lots on a private street, could we put duplexes on that even with the wider 22-foot street and sidewalk?
So there might be some room for variance on an infill project versus a new, if there even is a place where you would put in a new private street, but?
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. I mean, we've got new, which we have more control over, and we have existing, things that have already been built. And again, I can picture a couple of these projects right now that I have builders that are going, hey, I'd really like to build duplexes, but the street was originally intended for four lots. Oftentimes, it's because duplexes weren't allowed in those zones, right? You've got to remember, middle housing took all the R1 zones, R1.6, R1.8, R1.10, R1.12. Duplexes used to not be allowed in those zones and now they are. So middle housing says, hey, we're going to let you put a duplex in. When it comes to density, we're going to let you count them as single-family. So really, this is the last piece that's forcefully saying, no, you still can't build a duplex, even though the middle housing code really is pushing for the allowance of that duplex on a single-family lot. And that's why we're looking for a solution that's safe, you know, that, it needs to be safe. Public safety needs to be comfortable with this. And I really, the only thing I can think of is force, somehow make an additional parking space required on that duplex lot if they're going to build a duplex. So then I think that's the challenge today.
They're having a whole conference in the back of the room now. Apparently, we've raised enough questions. Go ahead, Rick.
So Justin, when we look at different considerations, do you see the third option, authorize staff negotiate the number of units on a site-by-site basis possibly at this time the best way to go? And then I want to say do a test for the next six months and see how it goes before we start putting anything hard and fast in the rules? Would that be?
Yeah, I mean, from an existing, from an existing private street lot perspective, and again, this is like circumventing some of these weird codes that are in laws that are competing with each other. I don't know, is there a way we could authorize staff to say, hey, on an existing private street, an existing private street lot, could staff evaluate those on a case-by-case basis? And then during that review, the exchange of the case-by-case basis would be to added additional parking space? You know, a garage in a space or a double space? That's one idea.
Rick, Rob, do you still have a question?
So could it be, could it be deemed reasonable that the smaller, the two-to-four-unit private street versus the larger five-to-10-unit, that they be essentially viewed differently? Meaning that, you know, developer wants to do duplexes, you know, on a smaller one, the two-to-four unit, gee, I'm sorry, but you can't do it. But on the larger one, because you've got the extra safety built in with regards to a sidewalk with a rolled curb, that, you know, that could potentially be encouraged or allowed. In other words, the smaller one is kind of one answer and the one that's been built on a, or been planned to build on a larger, wider street would could be another answer.
I think, I mean, that's a possibility. I think what we're seeing, the requests we're seeing for duplexes typically is happening on the smaller streets. So I think that's, you know, if we're going to say on existing smaller streets. The larger ones allow up to 10 right now. It could happen, the potential of somebody coming in, say, I want to do a 10-lot private street and do duplexes on everyone, could happen. But the likelihood is more of these projects are going to occur in that smaller range on that 20-foot street. You know, the other thing we could, we could consider is if you had a 20-foot street, could you widen it two more feet? Without the curb, without the curb gutter sidewalk, but just take, you know, so if I had an existing private street 20 feet wide and there was, you know, maybe one unit developed on it already and the rest of them aren't, could we then, if 22 feet is the magic number, could we widen it to 22 feet? That could be another consideration to get to that 22-foot number.
And that means without putting in the sidewalk and curb?
Without curb and sidewalk, yeah, because it's already established.
Yeah, because a curb and sidewalk, you said takes seven foot totally?
Four, five, at least five feet because it's a four-foot sidewalk plus two six-inch curbs.
Okay.
Plus construction area. Big questions?
DJ.
I'd like to make a comment. So I think it's really important to see what it is we're talking about. Private roads have been a mechanism of development for higher density heretofore. Middle housing is a totally different beast. You can do a 20-foot access into 20 units on a flag lot if you wanted to now using middle housing code, right? So I think what we're really talking about here is already created private streets, really. So, you know, I see the utilization of the private road code winnowing and the utilization of middle housing growing is what I mean to say. So I'd be willing to entertain increasing those caps on both the smaller and the larger in some way that's going to accommodate some reasonable density increase, all things considered. That would be option two.
Hey, Brad, is there a possibility right now of allowing some exceptions on a case-by-case basis? What is the process?
We do. Yeah, we were just talking with Joe and, you know, that does happen in terms of under the fire code. And he could talk more about that, but, you know, the variance, you know, can be seen as a barrier to development, of course. I mean, because it does add fees, it does add time. We have some latitude and we could maybe make that clearer in the code so that the waiver option, which is at the staff level, eliminates the extra six weeks. It's about that, you know, six to eight weeks of time to do a variance. Right now, you have to do the variance if you want to do less than that 20 or 22, unless there's some other state statute that kicks in that allows, that basically overrides us. And that, but other than that, you know, adding more clarity in the code and using more of a waiver tool versus a variance tool, you know, may be an option. Again, this just kind of gets to the degree that the council and the commissioner are comfortable with these decisions being made. I mean, the reason you have the variance right now is because it goes to, you know, a third party. It goes to the planning commission who reviews that case-by-case. So, you know, we, I always, I'm uncomfortable using waivers unless we put a few criteria that really help to give the staff really clear, and developers, really clear criteria. And okay, here's when you can be approved for a waiver. If you don't meet these, you've got to go to a variance.
So if we have a lot right now, or a private street, that let's say it has four and it's 20 feet, and somebody wants to do an ADU, or maybe one lot isn't developed and somebody wants to put a duplex there, what happens? What are their options?
Well, today, their only option would be to widen the street.
So they don't have an option to get a variance or a waiver to build that fifth unit on the fourth? It's just a hard no or you have to widen the street?
Right.
Okay. It's all becoming clear. Joel.
So if I heard you correctly, let me word it a different way and see if I understood. So if you have four units on a private street and you, and then a contractor wants to build the fifth unit and it's a duplex, they would have to widen the street to 22 feet? Or if we had a code that said if you provided parking onsite, we could waiver that widening of the road? Did I hear you correctly?
Did you say parking on the side? Is that what you said?
No, parking on the duplex, parking on the private, off-street parking.
Well?
And that would be the grounds then for granting a waiver so you don't have to widen the street?
Right. We, I think we would need to add, we would need a code amendment to add that clarity today. Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I have a question for Brad. I'm still unclear, like, why with the fifth unit? Like, how is two feet on the extra, two feet of width going to help this situation?
Well, again, it really is coming down to the fact that in a 22-foot street section, you are today required to do the four-foot sidewalk as well. It's not just adding two feet of?
So in that case, how is the extra six or seven feet going to provide any additional access?
Well, I think, Joe, do you want to touch that?
I mean, I understand the need for turnarounds and things at the end of the street. There's definitely private streets. I've had trouble getting my own personal vehicle out of them. Just not sure why the fifth unit, you know, how that affects the fire truck.
It's basically just with the density, we're looking for more maneuverability. So if we have a additional two feet of paved surface, a rolled curb, and then four feet of sidewalk, that allows us to utilize that space. It's clear space, things that we can get around and maneuver. So again, it's all in, the more units that we're constructing, the more the density is going to be for people trying to park. Currently, you know, if you put in, you know, four ADUs in the backyards of these existing homes, where are those folks going to park at? Unless they go back out to a public street or have onsite parking, there's going to be a propensity that we're going to put these on the street, on the private, on the public street, excuse me, private street.
Okay, so you're really anticipating more people are going to be parking on the public street when there's more units on the street?
As we develop lots that don't have any parking, yes. That's only a natural conclusion. I wish we were at a further point, you know, where folks don't drive as much as they do, but currently we have to kind of, in the fire department, we have to think of the now. We try to mitigate the risk as we know it.
Okay, thank you. Gail, I think, did you have something? And then Rick.
Hello, everybody again. I just wanted to say, and I do manage an HOA that has private streets. And so some of these problems of parking, cheating, mostly it happens in projects I'm involved in with guests. Can't hear me? Oh, okay. Guests will park in the private street more than the owners sometimes, and sometimes the owners do. But what I would really love to see is that, if the city could help us enforce that. And so when someone does it, we can call the police and say, please, come and ticket these people.
It's a private street.
Yeah, but we, I don't, I don't?
That's the difference right there.
It's a civil issue.
Which can't be done. So what about fire, safety?
That's this whole conversation, right?
Are we still on, that we can't enforce it from a safety issue for fire safety? Can't?
No, you can cite them, but not tow them?
Oh, citing is good. Not, no, not, no. But in the practical sense of managing this, if people get cited and have to pay a fine, they don't usually do it over and over again. You know, they're like, oops. So if we could get some more, some aggressive citing when people break the rules, that would really be helpful. And we're all trying to do the same thing, more density, get more houses, more, less expensive housing, by all these things we've talked about with the duplexes and things like that. So I would just like, Sam, really in favor, and the home builders would be in favor of enforcement in any way that we can get it, okay? And I also wanted to talk about, just a little bit, and I was a little confused, but talking about widening a street in order to make the width to try to accommodate this new duplex, we're going to say. I just wanted to say from a practical real estate salesperson viewpoint on that, that would only work if the developer owns all the units on that street. Because otherwise, I mean, if they're all sold already, he can't just take somebody's front yard and make it a wider street. Does that make sense? So that's just something I think that would only work in a rare, in a very rare circumstance. And that's about all. The, that's about all. Do you have any questions? That's pretty much what I wanted to talk about, is the safety and keeping those cars. And we haven't had too much problems in the projects I'm working on, but we have quite a bit of off-street parking to, you know, a garage, two units of the garage, and then on the apron or the parking lot. I mean, there would be able to have four. And that's enough. So, okay. Questions?
Well, I think with any parking management, you know, it's based on complaint-driven system and availability of resources. So nobody's out patrolling private streets or public streets for the most part, looking for people parked illegally or poorly or whatever. So that requires the neighbors to be turning each other in, right?
And they do.
Which a lot of people do and a lot of people don't.
You do.
And it's going to be different on a case-by-case basis, but I think ultimately when the fire truck needs to be on your street, you want it to be clear, right?
Absolutely. Or the ambulance, somebody's having a heart attack.
Absolutely.
And I just, I tell them that when they buy the property. You might be the one that needs that emergency vehicle, so kind of don't just think about it, think, you know, these rules are helping you as well as the rest of it. So we don't have that much trouble, but it has come up more with guests. And so, but, and then some people just break rules all the time. You may not know any of those, but, so I would like to see as much enforcement as we can get. If we can, so we can call and call the city police and say, hey, someone's blocking the fire lane. The city police would come out and ticket them? Anybody know?
You can, and as resources are available, I think they will. Or the code compliance officer, do you want to answer, chief?
I was just a little bit distracted because I was actually looking up the amount of parking tickets that go unpaid. The recent email I just received was over $9,000 and same people. Would we go out and issue a parking ticket if that was part of our responsibility? Of course we would.
Good.
Assuming somebody calls?
I've called them in, I, you know, and I've just called sometimes the property manager when it's a tenant that's breaking the rules and they'll get right on it, so, but.
Yeah, I think we just want to avoid creating a situation where we know people are going to be parking on the street because they don't have another place to park.
Hey, I'm a big fan of parking and garages and making sure in upfront that we have parking spaces. And even if our house has, we have to build a two-story to fit it on the smaller lot to accommodate some people too. Or even parking underneath houses and apartments, we have that all over town too. That's a good idea. So, yeah, I'm a big fan of parking. fan of parking. Plenty of parking to avoid these crowded-looking streets.
Rick, you're next.
So Brad, I have a question for you. So what I'm hearing, if you have a four-lot development with a 20-foot street, and you want to take one of those units and make it a duplex, then we need a 22-foot wide street. But also, what gets invoked at that point is to add a sidewalk. Is that the current requirement?
Yeah, that is correct. And I completely agree with Gail. I mean, the feasibility of this happening in existing situations is practically zero. We're just pointing out that that's what would be required. You know, I have seen a few instances where you, you know, there may be an alternative emergency access, you know, that could be secured through an adjacent property, where you have two cooperative, you know, property owners that are adjacent to each other, and they say, okay, we'll construct a, you know, a second ingress egress. So, you know, all those things are on the table, but we're talking about just trying to, you know, mitigate risk through design.
Right. So where I'm heading with the question, do we have the ability to modify that requirement where the sidewalk would not be required, and just put in a rolled curb on both sides to come up with a 22 feet? Do we have that option? Would it take an ordinance?
It would take an ordinance amendment.
But we do have that opportunity, if we want to go that direction? We're not regulated by the state to provide that sidewalk, for instance?
That's correct. We're not. Yeah. So your scenario would be a code that says you can, you can construct a 22-foot without sidewalk?
Correct.
And increase the number of units to 10?
Well, at least allow a duplex in there. I think that would be a good discussion. How many units do we want on a 22-foot wide street with no sidewalks? But I think if it opens up the door, especially for existing developments, to create one duplex, I think it's worthy of looking at. Thank you. Joe, you had?
Yeah. So again, the two feet really isn't the issue. It's using the rolled curb and the sidewalk as maneuvering area. So adding, you know, another two feet in rolled curb is going to put us off into an unstable surface. So it's not usable for the fire trucks, or even for cars. You're going to be into soft lawns, other things that aren't going to be reliable. So it's not really a win, as far as we're concerned, to gain that extra two feet with a rolled curb without some kind of a surface to support the vehicles.
So maybe it's more just in question, because can't you make a rolled curb that's adequate to take a fire truck? Because otherwise, if you're having to come back and reconstruct that street, it's quite involved.
Right. So yeah, the rolled curb has a construction standard, just like a normal curb does. It's beyond that curb is the issue. So if we don't have that four feet of sidewalk, which is engineered, that surface beyond the rolled curb is dirt, lawn, that's not going to support the fire apparatus, and that's not maneuvering ability for us.
So if you had a development with a 20-foot street with four units in there now, and one unit wants to convert to a duplex, you need, all of a sudden, we change for your needs to inquire that sidewalk engineered?
It's like most things, there's a breakpoint. You know, for small businesses, we say 49 or less can only have one egress. We have an assumed amount of risk that we're willing to take. That's an arbitrary number. It's kind of like things that we have to draw the line in the sand. I think there's other avenues. We've worked with developers before. We just have to have the ability to have those exceptions in there. Maybe it's a case where you can't require the off-street parking, but we say, hey, you know, if you can provide off-street parking, adding ADUs is the big one for us, because they're just, they have no ability to even add that, then we can say, hey, there's a trade-off. You can add those, if you add enough of street parking. That would have to be something that would be through Brad and built into the code.
I want to comment. I think that's at the heart of this. It's not about a numbers thing. It's really about what type of risk are you wanting to take on from a policy perspective? That's truly what it is. 20 feet, 22 feet, whatever, those are just, those are just things that sort of confuse the conversation. This is truly about, from a policy perspective, what amount of risk do you want to take, and how that might impact also quality of life standards from a policy perspective. Those are the two things that really need to ask ourselves. And if you're willing to take on the additional risk associated with that, then the, one of the easiest things would be to just go ahead and up the numbers, or double them, or something, or whatever you wanted to do for both of those types of developments, five and under, and five and 10, so you can get the additional density. Because the truck can still get down there with a 20-foot, right? You're just taking on additional risk with that higher density. So that truly is, I think, the foundation of the policy decision in front of you today, or for a future, a future meeting.
Is there not a possibility of having some sort of case-by-case waiver variance? I mean, different lot sizes, different street widths are going to have different needs, depending on what the particular application is?
So that actually gets on a point that I wanted to make, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, again, I just want to say, like everybody else is kind of tracking on here, the widening street issue, that's just an example of what it would take to get more density at this point. Widening an existing private street just is not happening. Like, you just, it's not going to happen. So basically, that's just meant to understand that if you want to increase densities in these circumstances, you virtually cannot do it, right? That's why that was brought up, in my opinion. I think that was kind of supported by a couple comments out there. So I wanted to touch on alternative three, about offering staff negotiate number of units on a site-by-site basis. Well, I'm not comfortable with that, because that's going to be costly and timely, right? I think that this is the greater negotiation, right, using common circumstance for private streets to entertain what could possibly be the new standard. I don't think staff or the development community would necessarily be comfortable with a gray area code that you might be able to get 12 units, or you might be able to get a duplex in there. And I don't think really anybody in staff wants to shoulder that kind of authority. Does that make sense? So that's why I'm generally uncomfortable with that option. Development community, as well as staff, they need reliable, codified change if we're going to do so. So I'll say again, increasing the, increasing the cap in some reasonable way. I think doubling is probably a little much, but that's just, of course, it's just an example. I think doubling these, that's a lot more. If we're talking about wanting to get a couple duplexes or ADUs inside the standard, I think that's reasonable to allow, of course, given the conversation with public safety. I really hate to complicate this even more, but in private street applications in excess of 10 dwelling units, planned unit developments are often utilized. Is it, we kind of have to expand that conversation into PUDs, in my opinion? You know, because if it's a PUD and we say 14 units, well, that's it. That's the density you get, 14 units. How is that going to apply for theoretical, fully-built-out planned unit development that wants an ADU in a basement that's going to add a 15th unit, right? Understanding that planned unit developments have full street standards, curb gutter full width, off-street parking, et cetera. So I think we have kind of that issue that we need to address, along with the other two private street standards.
Rick? Sorry, Rob. It's the second time today.
And I'm also not trying to overcomplicate this, but, you know, when Aaron talks about increasing, or it comes down to how much risk is the city or the council comfortable with, the thing that I keep coming back to, and I'm just going to bring it up now, so that we can either consider it and consider it, or we can just discard it, but, because I don't want to essentially sandbag the process later on. But when I think about risk, nobody today really has talked about pedestrian risk, or especially pedestrians that are, we'll say, mobility challenged, whether that be a, an older person, or whether that be a child. You know, I lived on a street in Grants Pass that had basically no sidewalks for many years. When sidewalks were added, it was actually pretty amazing to watch the young families that would then walk with strollers, kids riding their first two-wheeler at age four, five, or six, using the sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. And my concern is, when we get back to what Joe Hyatt was saying, you know, we're not, and really, you know, we have to essentially legislate for the reality, you know, not the textbook. So, reality is, is that there's going to be, you know, young children potentially living in these houses. I'm concerned that if people are going to be parking on these streets, and we really don't have an enforcement mechanism, now you've got some little kid on a bike that, you know, may be coming out of his own house, or whatever, not very visible to drivers, now he's got to ride on the street because there's no sidewalk. You know, how much more density do we want there? And how many more parked cars, and how many more cars coming and going? Do we want a situation where we could have dangerous-for-pedestrian situations? So it's not just the fire trucks, which are obviously, you know, are really, probably the number-one priority, or emergency vehicles, but it's also, where do, where do people actually live? How do they walk on this street? How do they ride a bike on this street? How do they push a stroller in the street? So I'm concerned with that, just packing that many more, that much more density into a situation that really has not, has no accommodation for pedestrians at all. And that concerns me also. And I'm willing to listen to, you know, anybody's solution on this. I'm not, this isn't my wheelhouse, so I don't really have solutions for it. But I'm concerned also with the risk we're talking about there of pedestrians, both young and old.
Well, I think Councilor Pell brought up a really good point. And, you know, if we were just starting, talking about just new development moving forward, a potential win would be, you can have, say, whatever, two-thirds, or a third, or double what we currently have on 20-foot, if you do a four-foot sidewalk. So you accommodate both the pedestrian impact, the density level impact, some fire impact, because now you've got 24 feet wide, technically with a 20, still within a 25, usually, lot standard that you had from the beginning when there was developed. And so you meet all that. That would be great from a new development perspective. But what Mr. Gerlitz is talking about, and what developers are finding, is they're finding, we already have these developments that only have, say, 20-foot. And so you, and it's already passing one, or two, or whatever properties to get to the flag lot. So you really can do that. So what do you do to, to increase the density on these developments that are already in existence, that you don't have the ability to expand? So, but I love the idea of what Councilor Pell mentioned, and moving forward, or standing, that could be something to be discussed also, is maybe you do a 20-foot with a sidewalk, and that would accommodate what Councilor Pell was talking about. Just something for future thought.
Joel?
I'd just be brief, too. The other thing with risk is fire, and that parlay's to fire insurance. And there's several houses in Ashland now that can't get fire insurance. There's been several people in this town, their fire insurance has been canceled because of increased risk that already exists in the area. Initial attack is really important, because there's been a couple towns that have burned down. So there is a real risk. I'm not saying that that doesn't lead us one way or another, but I don't think we can ignore the risk, that when we take it on, there's a real risk.
Sure. Kind of want to go back to what I'm perceiving private roads as being sort of the, the old, only way to increase density per lot, and middle housing being the new. So I think, right now, we're primarily talking about roads that have already been built, and we're talking about getting a couple more dwelling units per application, right? Not necessarily doubling it. I don't imagine a four-street, a four-lot private street, putting an ADU in every backyard, effectively doubling the density. I think we can all agree that the risk is a little bit high there. We're always going to have a risk-benefit analysis to do, right? And let's say, for example, what we can do with middle housing, a 20-foot access easement, that's not even a private road. It's just a way to get vehicles and utilities back to these, these density developments, and you can put 20 houses back there. If you can cram them in there, you can just do it, right? So, you know, I just want, I don't want to contradict that there is a risk with more increased density. I'm just trying to bring the light that there are now vehicles in our development code that allow for much higher-density applications with smaller road accesses than we currently do. So yeah, when we do a risk-benefit analysis, certainly, I'm going to agree with you up to the point where, where are we too shy about a risk assessment and the benefit that we're going to get? The fact of the matter remains is we need more houses. And if you have builders that would like to get a couple more in already-existing applications, I really see that the benefit to that is greater than a little bit of risk. Because, yes, going to agree, these decisions are risky, but the negotiations need to happen, and I remain that we, we need to make some kind of allowance for increased density. You know, going back to 2014, where the UGB expansion happened, the primary goal at council at that time was to increase infill utilization, right? And we're actually finally at a point, with middle housing things in large part, to fully realize the potential of that decision, right? And here, we're not talking about a lot more units. But hey, if we're talking about 20 units a year, any unit's a good unit, in my opinion, with reasonable risk analysis involved. So doubling, probably not. 20%, 30%, reasonable. So I think that's where we should pursue.
So DJ, when you say we're not talking about a lot more units, would that mean, like, say, in a private, a four-unit private street, that it could go to eight? Or are you saying it would be capped at five or six? You know, what are you, what are you proposing?
Sure. I wouldn't, I wouldn't suppose doubling it would be, would be reasonable, right? If it's four to six, and 10 to 14, that seems reasonable to me. You know, four to eight, and 10 to 20, that does not seem reasonable to me, given the private road standards. But we do still need to recognize that you could do either of those with the middle housing, new construction application, right? So I think what we're really talking about here is marginally increasing density allowance on already-constructed land, right? Under the standards that came before us, the width standards particularly.
So essentially, it would be a first-come, first-served situation. You've got potentially four different, four different owners, and at some level, some owner would be saying, sorry, it's capped out. You don't, you know, you don't have the same rights that these other people had that came before you, but it's essentially capped out. So it's first-come, first-served, is what you're saying?
Essentially, yeah. I guess that, that is what I would be saying, and that's, I think that's an excellent point. Well, geez, my neighbor did one, and then my other neighbor did one, and now I can't do one. Okay, well, there you go. We're talking about, what's the benefit of property right ownership and density, and getting an ADU, or more dwelling units? Still looking at the risk factor, though. So are you advocating for doubling these numbers?
I'm not, but you threw out a, you know, essentially a theoretical, although you did put some numbers to your, to your words.
Sure.
But I'm just making it real clear that, yes, we'd have rights for the first end, and then that would be it. Yeah.
Sure. Sure. No, that's a good point.
Brad, I think we touched on this earlier, but we all probably have a better understanding of what we're talking about now. Is there a possibility to do a trade-off, that you could, let's say, we have this imaginary four-lot, you know, private street, and somebody wants to do an ADU, if they can add two, two parking spaces, they can add an ADU, and if their neighbor next door can add two parking spaces, they can do an ADU. Is that, is that a possibility? So that it's not based on percentages of first-come, first-served, but like, who has the, who has enough lot size to accommodate parking or turnaround space?
Yeah, today, today, that would not be an option. We would, if you had only the 20-foot access, the answer would be, sorry, you, there's already four units accessing this 20-foot. You would not be able to proceed, so.
Is it possible to make that be an option, given the middle housing code and these not being able to require parking, but that we're, we're requiring parking as an exception to our private street rules?
Right. I've got a lot of notes here, and that's one of them that I wrote down to see the, you know, explore a little bit in more depth, and make a few more phone calls. We called a couple of cities in preparation... We called a couple of cities in preparation for today, several of which, of course, don't, don't allow private streets except for in very limited situations. So we're already kind of at that, you know, that, that, on the continuum of, of no private streets and use private streets liberally, we're, we're, you know, kind of towards the, the more liberal end, in terms of the number of situations where we allow them. But I, I have that down to look and also to kind of gauge the comfort level, because I think to Joe's earlier point, it kind of comes down to whether you can use the fire code to, to require those additional parking spaces versus using the development code, and whether that's an avenue we can, we can use. Since the widening of the street is infeasible, that seems to be about the only other route to go.
Okay. Val?
Which kind of was what I was, kind of led to the question I was going to have, because it kind of goes back to the, a lot of what's denying this is the climate-friendly, no-parking standards coming down. And we can't be the only city having to deal with that issue, so, and goes back to the same thing, is can we use the fire code? Because basically, it seems to me, if you're using public safety as your avenue to say, hey, this is for the, for the safety of the people living in the neighborhood, that you should be able to use that fire code and use, as an enforcement to, to alter and make that be the reason why you're increasing the code. Nothing to do with climate-friendly, but the reality of, of course you're going to have more parking there if you have, I still can't believe you couldn't do it with, that you could put a duplex in there and only have one parking place and not think that that would be a problem. I mean, that to me is ludicrous. And it goes right back down to the climate-friendly. It may work in one place, but it doesn't work in another, and how, and that's why I would hope that with a fire code, that that would be just added ammunition. So it sounds like you kind of have the same questions and thoughts that I'm having, is that there's got to be a way to push that through.
Okay. It seems like we have some questions that Brad's going to look into. I don't think we're going to be able to come to any sort of conclusion on this today, but everybody have their questions answered for the time being, and you can all explore some private streets and, and think about this a little bit. DJ?
I'd like to have an expectation of how long this research is going to take, and when we can expect to bring this conversation up again.
Yeah, you know, a lot of it's already been done. I think you've raised some great questions and points today, so I think, you know, two months would be, would be adequate for us. We could probably do it sooner, but that's, that's at the, at the out. If I need to give one today, that would probably be just to make sure that we get it. Four, four to six weeks.
Okay. Anything else on this issue? Okay, thank you. Next up is our fourth quarter work plan update with the city manager, Cubic.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. It's with great honor and privilege that I am here to provide you with our fourth quarter review of our work plan, which is associated with your strategic plan. Again, I'm up here and I'm the one giving you an update, but really, this is a cumulative effort between council, staff, and the community, in order for us to achieve some of these goals. It takes all three groups in order to come together to achieve success. You're familiar with this, but really, this process works well because we develop a strategic plan. Council does so by getting input from all your advisory committees, the public, city staff, yourselves, and you develop a comprehensive strategic plan. Staff then develops a work plan, which sort of is a, a map, a GPS, with how and explains how we're going to get to where we're going to go to achieve your goals. That work plan is utilized to develop the budget. The budget is presented to the budget committee, who allocates the resources. Once those resources are allocated, we go to work in utilizing those resources to achieve council's goals. We monitor and promote success, which is one of the things we're doing today. Our work plan is developed in SMART goal format. We know what the specific actions are, we know how to measure them, are they achievable, what type of resources and relevancy they have, and what type of time commitment is associated with each one of your objectives and your tasks. We have five primary goals: enhance community safety, provide cooperative shared leadership involving council, staff, and the community; encourage economic opportunity; facilitate sustainable and manageable growth; and maintain, operate, and expand our infrastructure to meet community needs. Those five goals are then supported by 15 objectives, and those 15 objectives are supported by 22 different actions. Go through and highlight some of the fourth quarter updates for you. First one is under enhance community safety. Objective one is to maintain necessary public infrastructure. Over the last year, and especially in the fourth quarter also, we held multiple public meetings, we've had community forums, we've had community surveys also that have gone out, which has provided you with valuable information to help make an informed decision. You have provided direction at the first quarter of 2024, but this is, this is for the closure of 2023. So, closure of 2023, the takeaway when it comes to public safety is you are in high gear, gathering as much community input as possible to make an informed decision for year 2024 to help us develop the budget. That spin of both staff and council's interest is Hillcrest Station. This is our oldest station of the three stations, and it does come with age, it does come with some, some issues. We did provide council with a memo. Staff does recommend basically the conclusion of that memo, that we work with a consultant to look at the station in more detail, determine what its needs are, but not only that, to also look at its location, its response times and call volumes, and where it sits right now, how does it work with regards to future potential growth, to ensure that the enhancements of the fire services in our community will be done appropriately with the appropriate spending of resources. Continuing under enhancing community safety, objective three, Posture Grants passed to be a leader in addressing homelessness, mental health, drug addiction, and other related issues. With the help of our neighborhood specialist, Amber, she did participate along with the city and representing the city in the point-in-time contact partnership with UCAN. That's valuable information that the community gets each year and helps drive policy direction on programs that are associated with the unhoused. From a city perspective, we did complete Explore Unhoused Vehicle Program. We do have that in place, you've codified that. We have reached out and continue to reach out in partnership with some of our nonprofits, including PATH, to try to determine interest in establishing one of these type of programs. There were initially two organizations that did express interest, but there has not yet been a host site identified. Continuing under the same objective, we've got working with state and local partners to establish homeless shelter site. The city council's grant, which you provided, along with staff support, did help stand up warming shelters for this winter. And again, that was partially due to your leadership and ability to provide some additional ARPA dollars to help stand up two warming centers, one by a nonprofit, both by nonprofits. Develop and implement community communication strategy. We've done a lot of work there. When it comes to housing, Amber Neek, our housing specialist, and also provided a forum that talked about rent burden status. So it provided an opportunity for the community to learn more about what it is to be rent burdened, and also provided information on, on programs associated with trying to deal with that issue. We did also create a publication, which is sort of the city's first organizational annual report. I believe that is on the dais there in front of you. It is sort of a state of the city for the organization, so it's something that we'll have there, we'll post and put on the web, and it just provides additional information on all the services that we do to help build community. Under encourage economic opportunities, facilitate an environment to encourage business prosperity and economic opportunities. Then council took a lead on trying to determine how to help our nonprofits make their programs more successful. And in doing so, through discussions, we developed a grant program. Council did identify a number of nonprofits and provided up to $35,000 to help their programs become successful. And there, on the screen behind me, are some examples of some of the nonprofits that you did provide some of the dollars for, to help promote community spirit in Grants Pass. Enhance essential business district, create a permanent plaza downtown. We've had a number of discussions on that, and just recently, we did have one, with Mr. Love coming in and talking to us also. We're working with Thornton Engineering to help prepare civil engineering drawings for the project. This is, we're talking about Fifth and G Plaza, and that design approval was done, and we're making great progress in, in the, in our future plaza. Yes, Council?
I just have a question, yeah, I just have a question, because it just came up in a conversation with, with someone. So what is the, where, where is the Fifth Street Storm Drain Project? When exactly is that happening? I mean, I guess, because they're going to be in tandem, so my question is, okay, and then are we going to start at the riverside and work this way, or are we going to start with a plaza and work the other way? So that has a lot to do with timing.
Yeah, I don't have all the details. We're actually going to be starting right here and working towards the river with that project. But it's, it's under design, I believe it's between 60 and 90%, but it's moving forward at a pretty good clip.
Okay. So the project with the plaza will not have to wait for it to work all the way back this direction?
Correct.
After we get that part done, it can happen. Okay, thank you.
community development challenges, increase available available lands inventory. Very pleased to announce that ODOT did approve the Allen Creek Transportation Impact Analysis on December 22nd, 2023. This is something that we've been working on for a long time. So it took a lot of energy, much more than what we thought originally, what was it, two or three years ago when we started this plan? But we finally got it completed. Staff will begin the annexation and rezone application process in January, including outreach to property owners.
I know, I'm going to jump in there again, and I just ask. So, so it's taken this long from when Allen Creek, it won't not, not, should not take as long, because, because I look at the big thing now with the state saying people can change their urban growth family and take in more land and all of those sorts of things. And we have the land, and we've done this part from 2015, whenever it was, but it's taken us, what, eight years just to get Allen Creek, to get the transportation part? So, so you can annex some, I mean, you can't annex anything, if I'm not mistaken, until we do a transportation for any of the different regions, am I correct? So we've got this one done, and didn't we reach out for the one on Allen Wood for, for transportation? So I guess I'm just wondering, is it, it's not necessarily the UGB process that holds or everything up, it's the trans, it's just as much ODOT and the transportation impact studies that have to be done in every one of those regions, am I correct?
Well, ODOT does have, have a role when it comes to the transportation impact analysis. We did something a little different than anyone else in the state has done. We said, let's take this one large area and let's ourselves do the transportation impact analysis for this area of land, which will checkbox off something the developers would have to do, or an individual property owner would have to do if they came in and did annexation. So this was something that was relatively new, and we got some bumps and bruises going through the process, but we ultimately got a great product in the end. Whether we want to do this and continue to do this in, in the future, we'll, we'll work through council on that. Any property owner could annex, and they don't have to hold up on, on certain things. They can do these things on their own. It's probably much simpler, and ODOT and the state is used to doing that on more of an individual basis, because we grouped all of these things together. That did throw up some red flags for ODOT to say, oh my gosh, okay, really, truly, what is the density impact if all of this got developed to maximum density? So we really had to talk through and work through that. That's, was a process that the state wasn't used to.
DJ has a question?
I'm pleased to hear this. Congratulations, good work. It says that you're going to start the recent application process in January. How's that going?
Yeah, we, we have the mapping, I think, done. We did want to send a preliminary letter out, I think we have that done. We, I think that should be going out next week, so I think the, the mapping piece is pretty well there. And then the main thing is the exact recommendation on which properties get rezoned to what, which the Housing Advisory Committee did have an early recommendation. It got tweaked a little bit because of the potential density having to be dropped a little bit because of the transportation impact analysis. But we should be, you should, you may potentially hear from constituents in the next couple of weeks who get a letter saying you're, we're, we're going to be filing an application.
Good, very good news. Thank you.
Under develop proactive solutions to community development challenges, council, you did do some code changes, which provided for lower minimum lot sizes to increased densities. And so that, again, is one step closer to getting additional housing and, and more housing within the city of Grants Pass. Continuing along that same trajectory, action three, develop programs which incentivize an increased density development. Council and staff did lower barriers to housing development and increased communication between the development community. Your workshop today was one example of that increased communication, and I think you've seen some benefits that have been associated with that increased communication between Action four, under the same objective, is scheduled by monthly workshops, and that has been very successful, wanted to make sure we highlighted that. There's been a lot of action that's associated and has come out of that, that staff is working on. We've got a lot of work to do just from the follow-ups of some of those workshops, and we're, we're trying to do that as, as quickly as possible to accommodate the needs of the development community. But it is a nice communication tool, because you hear directly from the development community on what the hurdles and obstacles are when it comes to processing any kind of application for development with the city. Under objective two, encourage environmental, which provides for affordable housing opportunities for the variety of Grants Pass resident needs. Action one, support and encourage the development of 225 units per year with the incomes and sizes of Grants Pass residents' needs. We did a couple of things. Allen Wood Road RFP was converted to a request for information, and we're working towards getting that on the books for you, and we've got more coming in the 2024 year. The Housing Authority of Jackson County also has 4.5 acres on the corner of Allen Creek and Harbeck, which was annexed into the city limits, and they plan on also about 68 units to come online with the city. So that's a positive also. Plan and develop infrastructure, under the goal maintain, operate, and infrastructure to meet community needs. Number one is develop Spalding industrial site. We had a great meeting, I think Council Lovelace was at that meeting also, when it came to just having a, a special committee to really focus on industrial development and what our barriers are with the properties. And so we're continuing to make progress with that. Geotechnical work has been done, and it's exciting to, to have a real focus on the development of our industrial lands, to make them more marketable. Objective one, plan and develop infrastructure, downtown lighting project. Staff reached out to Jim Love to discuss the project as a continuation of the Owl Lot Plaza project, so we're working with the consultant in conjunction with the plaza concept to sort of make that all one package, and that is a nice aesthetic addition that may, may happen with the, the plaza concept. find different multimodal ways, especially going north and south, and how to deal with Sixth and Seventh Street, and how do we incorporate good bike and ped routes? So that's what part of this is, is going to accomplish. Ensure park infrastructure needs are met. So this is something that I'm sure council is aware of, but identify and apply for grant funding. We've received over $500,000, I think, if you put these two projects together, including Dollar Mountain, we, and also the playground equipment at Reinhardt Volunteer Park. Those two things, we're looking at proceeding this spring and summer, which will add miles of biking and walking trails at Dollar Mountain and a wonderful playground facility at the much-used and cherished Reinhardt Volunteer Park. Under objective three, ensure park infrastructure needs are met. We have had discussions, and this might look familiar to you, with regards to Caveman Pool. We sent in the cost estimators, we did get the costs back, and council in first quarter has discussed this, and will continue to have discussions with regards to the pool project itself. Reinhardt Volunteer Park Wetland Trail Pollinator Garden prep work was completed, and we're making progress on that. Acquire Main Street certification. Recently, we had a partnership with Civic Possible and Experience Grants Pass, Travel Oregon, due to roadmap for downtown Grants Pass. It was a, it was a very robust program. It was very inclusive, provided a lot of, a lot of people an opportunity to provide input on what they'd like for the downtown area. They did have a learning and listening session where a lot of you were present for that, and it was a, a great opportunity for us to learn more about our possibilities on what we can do with a downtown association or district. And then objective six, ensure tree infrastructure needs are met. Infrastructure implementation, tree canopy and memorial trees are scheduled to be planted the first quarter of 2024, so we'll be working towards that goal, which came out of the Tree Advisory Committee. And that concludes my fourth quarter update.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions?
No questions. Looks like we've been doing a lot of work in different areas, so.
We have been, and thank you very much for, for your leadership, council, and providing policy direction on a number of things, especially the housing thing, the housing policy and the code changes that we've done. We've made a lot of progress over the years and have made it easier for people to get things accomplished, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to agenda review. We have a meeting on Wednesday. So first up is a presentation from our destination marketing organization, then we have a second reading on the humanitarian services ordinance. We're going to look at an ordinance, updating our water curtailment plan. Then we have a resolution to form the URA Task Force, Urban Renewal Agency Task Force, resolution to buy water treatment plant chemicals, a resolution to approve an AFG grant, a motion to acknowledge the monthly investment report, a motion to approve the findings of facts regarding on-track supportive housing special use permit, and appointing one member to the Committee on Public Arts. Any questions or things you want to move off of consent for Wednesday? Nope. Okay. And then our next workshop will be March 18th. We'll have the budget committee orientation that day and talk about A Street parking options near the high school. And anything that you want to get? We've had some additions to the, to the future workshops filling out throughout the spring. Anything else that we want to get on there besides, we did talk about coming back at private streets in a month or two? DJ?
I'm sure you can gather what I'm about to advocate for, but it's my job as the representative of the Home Builders Advocacy Group. In order to get back on the expected pace of bimonthly meetings, a meeting in April would be necessary so that we can look for June.
You just asked for a meeting in March so that we could be on, on pace with?
Yeah, so that, that made up for December's meeting, right? But the expectation was bimonthly starting January, which would put us in April. I'm just trying to align what the declared expectations are for home builders on bimonthly meetings. This meeting just made up for, for lost time expectation, that's all I'm saying. And if there's room in, in April, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I'll just come out in support of that. I mean, I was kind of looking when they were going the 4th through 16th, that by the end of April would be good. It looks like, and I was also wondering when Caveman Pool was coming up, I did see that it was put on April 29th, because I think that is something that is timely, that we need to get out to the community as well, so that even the 15th might be something.
Any particular topic?
Well, it seemed to me that what, that Bradley was going to come back with information for us, so I would imagine that would be the primary gist of trying to get this one solved, and there might be something else to add to that, I don't know.
Sure. My response to that was, we've had the conversation, that, that was the presentation, they were here, they have advocated. I think that they trust us to kind of handle that moving forward, right? So I would suggest looking at the list, letting them know as soon as we're on so that we can, because it'll be taken from that, that prioritized list that was presented to council last year.
And maybe, are you saying, and I'm asking you, is that what we talked about today, being able to put it on a meeting to do something instead of rehashing?
Yeah, that, that, yes, that too. So I think that was implied, it wasn't explicit, but if we're talking four, six, eight weeks, I think the rate-limiting step is staff's availability to get those questions answered, and of course, I would advocate to get that conversation moving forward as soon as possible. But that is fundamentally separate from an ask for a meeting in April of a different topic.
Okay, well, I guess I have a concern about, you know, we, we did have that as being a priority. We are only doing two workshops a month now, which we used to do four, sometimes even five. So if we don't have a specific topic, you know, that we're wanting to address, we are kind of artificially having the Home Builders Association meetings dominate our workshop schedule, so just a concern I have.
And that's, that is a legitimate concern, however, it was council's will for bimonthly meetings with the home builders, and that's what I'm advocating for.
And we actually went out of our way to make sure we did one in March, having just done one last month, and now you're saying that we're somehow behind schedule, but I think we could probably make arguments that we're behind schedule on a lot of things if we were trying to keep them on some sort of pace.
Yeah, well, and if you'll recall, we, we missed a meeting in December, because you're correct, we did have other things that we needed to discuss, and all I'm advocating for is that we demonstrate an expectation and, and we meet what we said we were going to do.
All right, anybody else? Okay. I think we need a motion to adjourn into executive session today. Is that right?
I make a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Seconded by Rick. All in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. (applause).